Good evening. Will the members and our guests please take their seats? This meeting will now come to order. As all members have received a copy of the call of tonight's meeting, the reading of the call will be omitted. Will everyone please rise and join me in saying I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As all members have received a copy of the proposed minutes of our March 13 meeting, the reading of those minutes will be omitted. Are there any suggested changes to those minutes? Hearing none and absent objection, the minutes as submitted stand adopted upon unanimous Two weeks ago, we lost a Greenwich icon. Joan Caldwell died on April 2nd, 2017. She was in her 52nd year on the RTM, serving the last 22 years as moderator pro temp. I relied completely on Joan to coordinate RTM matters with our town clerk, first selectman, and many others in town hall, as well as to lead numerous initiatives within this body. Joan was a charter member of our Labor Contracts Committee in the early 1970s and remained a member of that committee until she died. She was the only woman placed on the committee at its inception. One of the many pioneering roles she played as a woman in government in Greenwich. Joan was a dominant force on the RTM throughout her tenure. She advocated forcefully and eloquently for the causes she supported. You always knew where Joan stood on an issue. Her sole loyalty was to what she thought was in the best interests of the town. Numerous first selectmen chose Joan to spearhead a variety of projects and committees over her 52 years of public service. She worked tirelessly in the area of public safety, with a special interest in the fire department and its organization. Joan mentored numerous members of the RTM, particularly members of District 10, which she chaired for over 25 years. And you won't have thumbs up and thumbs down to kick around anymore. Joan was devoted to the town, the RTM, and to her neighbors in District 10. We've lost a great voice and a champion of the town of Greenwich. I personally have lost a caring friend and someone upon whom I heavily relied to carry out my responsibilities as RTM moderator. It is only fitting that this Greenwich legend and female pioneer be properly memorialized. I am grateful to so many who've come up with creative suggestions for such a memorial. I trust we will follow up on those ideas and come up with a lasting memory of Joan. If you are interested in helping make those ideas a reality, please contact me so we can move forward to that end. I commented at greater length on Joan's life of public service at her funeral, and I would be happy to share the text of those comments with anyone who might be interested. At this point, I call on Peter Tessie, our first selectman.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen of the RTM. I had the pleasure of knowing Joan Caldwell for close to 40 years. My earliest recollections of her were when I worked in a grocery store in Glenville and she would come in and stand in line and watch very carefully as we punched in her groceries to make sure we never made a mistake. And I, of course, knew her through her legendary service to the town. She had served by that point probably 20-plus years, and she had run for first selectman. While Joan was diminutive in stature, she was an iconic community leader. She exemplified citizen empowerment and civic pride, and was guided by her lifelong passion to not only improve the town she called "home," but also to improve and protect the quality of life for her fellow residents. Joan's service to the town as one of the longest-serving members of the representative town meeting is truly monumental. Joan had a simple approach to local government, that whatever the decision, it must provide a benefit to residents. For 52 years, Joan willingly gave her time to the RTM, serving on a myriad of committees and as the moderator pro temp for two decades. In one of her last efforts of service, Joan served as chair of the Selectmen's Board of Education Charter Revision Committee. Her work with that committee epitomized her approach to all she did: use an even hand, treat people with respect, research, listen, and above all, take the high road. In her oral history interview with the Greenwich Library, which I strongly suggest you read, Joan was asked to identify what made her a leader. In her amiable way, Joan explained, quote, "I think it's a characteristic of my personality. It drives me nuts to see something that obviously needs to be done, and not at least to try to do it." That characteristic in Joan came to life back in the 1970s when she took the lead in the backcountry to champion opposition to Xerox Corporation's plans to build its headquarters here. Joan was prescient. Without her stalwart opposition to the project and the ability to gather community support, Greenwich would be, as she said in that interview, quote, "a different place," end quote. In her own words, Joan reminisced about her community service and prevailing over Xerox and their plans to enter Greenwich. She said, quote, "Well, I don't know, looking back at it, I don't know where I got the energy. I really don't. I don't know where I got the determination, because there wasn't a soul that said I would win. But I'd be damned if I wasn't going to fight. And having fought and won, I look back at it and say, I was right. The heavens were with me, and the town is so much better off." The town is much better off for Joan's leadership, and the heavens are with her today. Her legacy, her dedication to the town she called "home" her entire life, is legendary. I think we will all miss her guidance and her wisdom. I know that I already do.
Good evening, fellow members. I come not with prepared remarks tonight, but with a vignette. About seven years ago, District 3 was in trouble. One of the large auto dealerships in town here had done great preparation to prepare a plan to build a 700,000 cubic foot repair center in a residential neighborhood in District 3, Chickahominy. And we were reaching out for whoever we could find to be helpful in fighting that what would have been a disastrous building. We were lucky in three ways. First, Peter got up and spoke against it early, and we had few people from District 2 and District 9, but we had a dealership that had spent $90,000 in traffic studies, in architects, and all the prep you need to have before the Planning and Zoning Commission, and we thought we were way behind. I was new to the RTM and was just appointed to the Labor Contracts Committee, and I asked Joan how I should approach it. And she said, "I'll show up." And she would drive from Riversville Road to District, to Town Hall, and appeared four or five times speaking on behalf of District 3 to fight before the Planning and Zoning Commission, and eventually defeated this major effort by this dealership, which had enormous roots and power in town. Sometime after, a few years later, as sort of a thank you, we asked Joan over for an adult beverage at Christmas. And not wanting to come empty-handed, Joan brought a cup. And the cup was in the spirit of "keep calm and carry on," but that was not Joan Caldwell. Hers said, "Don't tell me to keep calm." After Joan became sick, I called her from time to time as she was going through recovery and asked her how she was doing. The first response I got was, "I'm washing the dog." The next response I got is, "I'm weeding the garden." And up until the end, I feel like Joan was someone who died with her boots on. And I want to just say to everyone that I miss her very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, fellow members of the RTM, District 10 asks that you honor the memory of Joan Eleanor Caldwell, one of the longest-serving members of the Greenwich RTM. Joan died April 2nd, 2017, at the age of 85. She was born in Greenwich, educated in the Greenwich school system, she graduated from Skidmore College, and earned an MBA from New York University. She spent most of her adult life as a tireless advocate for the town. Among her many contributions, as has been mentioned, she led the fight to block Xerox from a major expansion in town. She also helped to keep the Thomas Seaton Reservation under local control of the Greenwich Council of Boy Scouts of America. Joan was for many years president of the Northwest Greenwich Homeowners Association. She was a leader and utilized senior energy, an organization founded by her late mother. Joan joined the representative town meeting in 1966. She was chair of District 10, chair of the Labor Contracts Committee, and for 22 years, moderator pro temp of the RTM. As was mentioned, she has been relied on by the moderator, the first selectman, and many town officials for her advice, organizational skills, and problem-solving capability. During Joan's tenure on the RTM, she was asked to chair innumerable special committees. Among Joan's many honors was the YWCA Spirit of Greenwich Award and the Liberty Bell Award from the Greenwich Bar Association. Joan was a powerful source, force for good in Greenwich. We are extremely thankful for Joan's many contributions of time and talent to our town, to the RTM, and to District 10. Mr. Moderator, we ask that this tribute to Joan Eleanor Caldwell be included in the minutes, and that an official copy be sent to her family.
Will the members please rise and join me in a moment of silence in memory of Joan Thank you. You may note, we have an empty chair with some beautiful flowers in it on the stage and beautiful flowers in Joan's seat in District 10. I thank Betsy Fruman for that idea and for obtaining those flowers and getting the chair. So that will remind us of Joan's presence during this meeting. Okay.
Good evening. Before I begin with the announcement, I just wanted to also offer my words of condolence for losing such a statue of inspiration and worthy, of worthy admiration for her and her work for the years. The only reason why I'm standing up is for momentarily to announce that the BOC is holding a workshop on April 25th from 7:30 to 9:30 in the Cone Room. As you know, at the district level, we had a BOC survey, and we asked for feedback on the fiscal year 2017-18 budget. We heard a lot of RTM members interested in more in-depth information, and we thought it would be appropriate to have a full workshop to discuss the issues and also possible ideas for reductions at the May meeting. So we invite you all to that meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. That now brings us to the call of tonight's meeting. I notified our district and committee chairs that based upon the reports received, I would recommend the following organization of our call. Items 1, 2, and 3 I will designate for the consent calendar. Items 6 and 9 to be combined for voting purposes, leaving to be considered separately items 4, 5, 7, 8, and 10. So at this time, I will designate the following items for our consent calendar. And if they remain on that consent calendar, what you hear now will be the only remarks you hear about those items, as we get no committee reports or have discussion on consent calendar items. Item number 1, which was postponed from the March meeting, is a resolution to appoint Francis Kip Bergweger Jr. to be a member of the Commission on Aging for a term expiring March 31, 2020. Item number 2 is a resolution appointing Stephen Bishop to be a regular member of the Historic District Commission for a term expiring March 31, 2022. And item number 3 is a resolution appointing Gary Delabate to be a regular member of the Board of Parks and Recreation with a term expiring March 31, 2020. Is there any objection to the designation of those three items for our consent calendar? Hearing none, will the district chairs please mark your voting cards, consent calendar items 1, 2, and 3, and proceed to poll your delegation. At this time, I will recommend that we suspend the rules to combine items 6 and 9 for voting purposes. Is there such a motion? It has been moved and seconded to suspend the rules to combine items 6 and 9 for voting purposes. Motion to suspend the rules is not debatable, and it requires a 2/3 majority to pass. All those in favor of suspending the rules to combine items 6 and 9 for voting purposes, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, the motion has carried. So we will take up those two combined items, and after disposing of them, we will pick up the remaining items separately. So item 6 now comes before us. Jim Rikki, Managing Director of Operations for the Board of Education.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and good evening. Resolve the sum of $250,000 is hereby appropriated to be added to the Western Middle School Fields Contamination Project account number Z680.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution on item 6 has been moved and seconded. May we get the reports of the committees that considered this, beginning with, who would like to go? Josh Brown, Chair of our Education Committee.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, fellow members and guests. The Education Committee took this up on last Monday, 3rd, in a joint session with Finance and Land Use, with all our districts' representatives present. We had Mr. Rikki with us, along with Jamie Barr from Lang and Associates, Peter Scher from the BOE, and Nancy Weisler from the BET. Mr. Rikki explained the key elements for the need for the additional appropriation. They had been performing testing of the fields around Western Middle School and were using operating funds. They unfortunately found chemicals that exceeded state and federal, or federal limits, and that the APA ordered additional testing to help identify the extent of what was initially identified. These testings are expected to be able to be completed with a report of the results issued in the June-July timeframe. This appropriation is being requested now, as the time is of the essence. We need to get a report, move on to remediation. As all of you've heard, quite a number of challenges with the fields. The BET has included approximately $2 million in the FY '18 proposed budget. That's in the coming year to help fund the remediation. Education voted 12-0-0.
Thank you. Michael Carter, who chaired the Land Use Committee meeting on this issue.
Yes, Land Use took this up, I guess it was two weeks ago as well. Again, just sort of, as stated, obviously contamination was identified when the fields were tested for the temporary classrooms. Arsenic PCBs were found at the site; it's been fenced off. Furthest testing revealed lead and chlordane. Of the 360 samples, 140 have been analyzed; 60 are contaminated. A new 90 sample program is proposed. Fields are out of service; town and school programs are spilling over into other fields, backing up other field activity and, you know, making it very difficult for scheduling of activities. Next year's budget, as stated, has $2 million for this remediation. Most in our group felt that regardless of how the material got there or how it was found, important thing is that we move ahead and find out what we need to do to get this taken care of. So the vote was 12-0-0.
Thank you. Michael Warner, Chair of our Finance Committee.
Good evening. The Finance Committee took this up, as you just heard, with two other committees, and it seemed a no-brainer in terms of having to understand what faces us in terms of risk with contamination. So we voted 12-0-0. Thank you.
Thank you. Discussion on item 6. Item 9 now comes before us. John Tonner, our selectman.
Mr. Moderator, members of the RTM, resolve that the following named person nominated by the Board of Selectmen be appointed a member of the Commission on Aging for a term expiring March 31, 2020, Dr. Ellen N. Wolfson.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution on item 9 has been moved and seconded. Alexis Vulgaris, Chair of our Health and Human Services Committee.
Good evening. Dr. Wolfson met with our committee on April 4th to discuss her nomination to the Commission on Aging. Dr. Wolfson practiced internal medicine in Greenwich for 31 years, and she retired two years ago. As she noted in her interview, as her practice grew in age, she found that she was working with more and more seniors, and she was referring those individuals to Nathaniel Wetherold, the Greenwich Adult Daycare Center, the Senior Center, and other resources in the community. As successfully appointed to the Commission on Aging, some of the areas she would like to focus on are nutrition and exercise for the senior population. She noted that she was highly influenced by a professor at Columbia University, Joan Gussow, who created a nutritional ecology course, which has sort of become the gold standard in the local food movement, healthy eating, and working with seniors. Dr. Wolfson is interested in how the senior population ages and how best to keep them active and exercising as they age. Given her extensive medical background, as well as her interest in seniors and wellness, our committee voted 11-0-0 with District 1 absent to appoint Dr. Wolfson to the Commission on Aging. Thank you.
Thank you. John Eddy, Chair of our Appointments Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The only bit of information I would add is that Dr. Wolfson was nominated to succeed Wendy Blumenthal. The Appointments Committee voted 11-0-1 with District 12 abstaining.
Thank you. Discussion on item 9. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards, combine items 6 and 9, and proceed to poll your delegation. Item 4, the first of the separate items now, comes before us. That was actually postponed from our March meeting. So I will read that. That is a resolution to appoint Scott Johnson as a member of the Board of Parks and Recreation for a term expiring March 31, 2020. That is now currently before us. Mr. Eddy?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Appointments Committee voted to make a motion to postpone until June.
All right. That being offered, this is a motion to postpone to the June meeting?
Yes.
That being offered on behalf of one of our committees does not require a second, and is currently before us. All those in favor of postponing item 4 to our June meeting, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, the motion has carried. Item number 5 now comes before us. Jim Rikki, Managing Director of Operations for the Board of Education.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Resolve the sum of $70,000 is hereby appropriated to be added to the Food Service account number S670-53400, known as Food Supplies.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution on item 5 has been moved and seconded. Josh Brown with the Education Committee report.
Mr. Moderator, fellow members and guests, your Education Committee met in a joint session with the Finance Committee, with all districts present. We had Mr. Rikki assisting us. We also had John Hopkins from the Food Services, the director of the Food Services, and Peter Scher from the Board of Ed with us. Mr. Rikki explained the key elements of the need for the additional appropriation. Effectively, they're projecting to run out of the appropriation to buy the food. They've been running at a higher rate of selling more food, and that therefore costs money, and so they're using up more than they had intended, which is a good thing. That means they're selling more food. The also-good part about it is that they're making a good positive margin on that sale of food, so there's actually expected to be a fairly significant balance that will be left as revenues are exceeding the cost of delivering that food. So that'll be a positive for coming out of this process. So our vote was 12-0-0 in favor of this item. I would like to take a moment and thank our member of the Education, Abby Large, who helped our committee understand the goings-on of the food service and the activities that she's leading to improve the quality and options that are available to make it more healthy and help the children and teachers better educate our kids on good food and nutrition. So thank you, Abby.
Thank you. Michael Warner with the Finance Committee report.
Good evening, fellow members. This item fundamentally was seen as an opportunity to take advantage of increased sales in the school system, and it was, it was well discussed by our membership. We didn't see any real downside here in terms of, with robust sales preceding this request and anticipated sales in the future, we, we found this to be an item that was easy to vote, and our vote was 11-1-0. The one opposing vote from District 7 was because, for the second year in a row, this is a request for funds, and in the opinion of the individual, there wasn't a sufficient rationale. Thank you. The vote was 11-1-0.
Thank you. Discussion on item 5. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards? Item number 5. Proceed to poll your delegation. I have the result of the vote on the consent calendar items. Those were items 1, 2, and 3. Those in favor, 1-70. Opposed, 1. Abstaining, 0. The consent calendar items have carried. All right. The next item is item number 7. Once again, John Tonner, our selectman.
Mr. Moderator, I have a substitute resolution.
Okay.
Resolve that the following named person nominated by the Board of Selectmen be appointed a member of the Board of Human Services for a term expiring March 31, 2020, Annalise Fernandez.
All right. And that substitute resolution just corrects the new name of the board?
Yes, exactly.
All right. Will a member please move the adoption of the substitute resolution on item 7? Substitute resolution on item 7 has been moved and seconded. Alexis Vulgaris, Chair of our Health and Human Services Committee.
Good evening. The Health and Human Services Committee met with Ms. Fernandez on Tuesday, April 4th, to discuss her nomination to the Department of Human Services. Ms. Fernandez has lived in Greenwich
Ms. Fernandez has lived in Greenwich for two years. She and her family have moved a number of times for work, and in each community that she has lived in, she has sought volunteer opportunities. Because Ms. Fernandez is fluent in English, Spanish, and Portuguese, she has worked as a community interpreter. Ms. Fernandez is a certified member of the U.S. Government's National Language Service Corps and is a nationally-certified medical interpreter. As a potential member of the Board of Human Services, Ms. Fernandez would like to increase the department's involvement and engagement with the Hispanic community. She would also like to investigate how resources for some of our low-income residents can be better accessed. And finally, she wants to make sure that the department utilizes best practices and is operationally efficient. Our vote for Ms. Fernandez was 11-0-0, with District One absent. Thank you.
Thank you. John Eddy with the Appointments Committee report.
I don't have anything to add to Ms. Vulgaris's report. The Appointments Committee voted 12-0-0 in favor of Annalisa Fernandez.
Discussion on item seven. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards? Item number seven, and proceed to poll your delegation. Number, item eight now comes before us. John Tonner again.
Resolve that the following named person nominated by the Board of Selectmen be reappointed a member of the Board of Ethics for a term expiring March 31, 2020, Robert Siska.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution on item eight has been moved and seconded. Mr. Eddy?
Mr. Moderator, the Appointments Committee voted to motion to postpone this to the June meeting as well.
All right. That being offered on behalf of our committee does not require a second. All those in favor of postponing item eight to our June meeting, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion has carried. All right. I have the result of the vote on the combined items. Those were items six and nine. Those in favor, 168. Opposed, 1, abstaining, 2. The combined items have carried. And number 10, item number 10. John Tonner.
Resolve that the following named person nominated by the Board of Selectmen be appointed a member of the Commission on Aging for a term expiring March 31, 2020, Anne Marie Hines.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution on item 10 has been moved and seconded. Alexis Vulgaris with the Health and Human Services Committee report.
Good evening. Our committee met with Ms. Hines on April 4th to discuss her nomination to the Commission on Aging. Ms. Hines has been a resident of Greenwich for over 40 years. Professionally, she's a lawyer with a deep background in working with the senior population. She's been heavily involved with the Greenwich Adult Daycare Center, where she served as the organization's Audit Chair. She also uses her legal background for advocacy issues. She provides elder law advice through the John Jay Legal Services in Westchester, and she currently serves as a pro bono attorney for Pace Women's Justice Center in White Plains, where she represents domestic abuse victims. If successfully appointed to the Commission, Ms. Hines would like to increase the Commission's involvement in senior legal issues, such as helping seniors set up simple wills, supplemental needs trusts, and helping them understand Medicare tax issues. Our vote was 11-0-0, with District One absent. Thank you.
Thank you. John Eddy with the Appointments Committee report.
Again, Ms. Vulgaris covered all of the points. The Appointments Committee voted 11-0-1, with District Six abstaining, to recommend Ms. Hines's appointment.
Thank you. Discussion on item 10. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards? Item number 10, and proceed to poll your delegation. That being the last agenda item to come before us tonight, we will await the resolution of the pending votes before proceeding to adjourn. All right. I have the result of the vote on item five. This was the appropriation for the Food Service account. Those in favor, 159. Opposed, 9, abstaining, 5. That item has carried. I have the vote on item seven. This is the appointment of Annalisa Fernandez to the Board of, the new Board of Social Services, whatever that new name is. Those in favor, 171. Opposed, 2, abstaining, 1. That item has carried. And we have one final vote that we are tallying. It's Jerry Anderson here. And I have our final vote on item 10. This is the appointment of Anne Marie Hines to the Commission on Aging. Those in favor, 167. Opposed, 1, abstaining, 0. That item has carried. That completes our agenda tonight. Thank you all for coming. The meeting stands adjourned upon unanimous consent. Thank you all for coming. Have a safe trip home.